you're actually considering this as a new permit tonight. It's not an extension or anything. Properties owned agricultural in that part of the county, as you can see, there's a residential subdivision to the south of the property, zone general business, a little bit of single family zoning to the east and to the north, and of course, you've got some residential and general business zoning along the highway there. Land use plan designates this as limited service in the Jarvisburg sub-area. And as part of this request, they did, the applicant did hold a community meeting on April 18th of 2013 at the Palace Point Senior Center. A summary of that's in your agenda packet, but real quickly, some of the issues identified at the community meeting was water quantity and quality, hunting on the property, poor management and reduction of the water level at Meadow Lake. And I'll let these gentlemen explain what they did to address that following the community meeting. And as I mentioned earlier, this, this permit for the mine, the mining operation was originally issued in 2002. That, that original permit was to excavate a maximum of 28.65% of the site. I don't know why it was that particular number at the time, but that's what it was in the permit. This new permit request before you tonight will ask to excavate 30% of the site, which our ordinance allows up to 30%, which is basically about a half of an acre increase in excavation area. And of course, as part of mining, they have to eventually reclaim the site as well. Couple of things related to the application that you need to consider tonight. One is mines require a hundred-foot, a hundred-foot setback from adjoining properties. They are requesting a 50% setback reduction along the northern property line. The ordinance does allow for setback reductions. To get that, you have to have some, have some sort of screening or vegetation, which they actually have natural, a natural wooded area that exists there, so they can meet the vegetation requirement. I'll note that the setback reduction is in an area where they've already encroached into an original hundred-foot setback. So what they're having to do is request the board to give some relief on the setback, but they went closer than 50 feet, so they will have to do some reclamation of area to restore the haul road and to establish the mine, reestablish it to meet the 50-foot setback. So again, you've got a request for a setback reduction, which the ordinance does allow, but they're going to have to do some reclamation to get to that point. Another thing is, is part of this is the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, requested a updated hydrogeological study and model, which is performed by Ed Andrews. Real complicated stuff, but it's important in this particular issue. What that, what that hydrologic study indicated is that as part of the de-watering program that's proposed, asking us to lower the, the water levels, they can mine, excavate sand, is, is to actually transfer or put some of that de-watered water into what's called a hydration ditch. So as I said earlier, there's a subdivision located to the south of this mining operation. In the past, that subdivision has had some issues with water levels in their wells. Not sure the extent to which that is or is not connected to this mine, but as part of the hydrological study, what's being proposed is, is to excavate a 30-foot wide, eight-foot deep, about 1,500-foot long ditch along that property line. And as they de-water the mining area, what they'll do is they'll put water, allow water to go into that ditch adjacent to the subdivision. So in theory, what that does is by de-watering into this hydration ditch, they should be offsetting or minimizing any impacts of the groundwater table in the subdivision. So again, that is a result of the hydrological study. Mr. Elliott can probably explain this better than I can, but it makes sense when you think about it. You're moving water closer to the area where you may have groundwater issues. And the de-watering system connects to the, the hydration ditch, so it all interrelates. It's all engineered, and eventually, as the water leaves the site, it has an outlet out towards the Currituck Sound and the swamp. Hopefully, that made sense. That is something they're doing to hopefully address some of the groundwater issues that have existed. As part of this request, you are issuing a use permit, and you're required to make certain findings. In your staff report, we have outlined the, the findings you have to make and made recommendations for your consideration. I'm not going to read all those, but I will note that when this application started, staff did have concerns with some of the de-watering activities and some of the impacts on the adjoining subdivision. Since this started, the applicant, Mr. Newbern, has went and replaced, I believe, paid for or replaced up to five wells on adjoining properties. They did the hydrological study, and they're putting the, the hydration ditch along that property line. So at this point, staff does feel like this permit does not endanger the public health or safety. We have done the things they needed to do to help us make that finding. But we do have, in reviewing this, the Technical Review Committee or staff does recommend conditional approval. We have a couple of conditions we want to add or suggest you add to this. One being that the 50-foot wide vegetative buffer be placed along the property line, along Keritook Highway and Lot 11 of Meadow Lake subdivision, that the chapel property be screened on all sides. That's a little in-holding piece of property there on the front of the site. Any dead vegetation that was placed on Keritook Highway from the old buffer requirement, that be replaced. There's some vegetation that was put in years ago that since died. All the existing vegetation on the northern property line, where they've asked for the setback reduction, a condition that that be maintained as required by the ordinance. Based on some comments from the state to, again, to minimize any de-watering impacts on the subdivision, that the maximum average depth of the excavation area be 25 feet with a maximum de-watering depth of 20 feet. Again, those numbers come from the state. And that discharge water samples be tested for solid turbidity pH and tested for those items quarterly. And that those quarterly tests be sent to the, to the county for review. Also, that two monitoring wells be, remain in place and continue to be tested as well. We've asked that these test results be sent to the county within 30 days of the reporting date. And three other things that we will, would ask the board to consider in terms of conditions. One is, in the old use permit, the hours of operation were seven to five, Monday through Friday, with maintenance permitted on the site on Saturdays from eight to 12. The new ordinance actually allows mining operations to be conducted from dawn to dusk, Monday through Saturday. We would suggest that we use the dawn-to-dusk language, Monday through Saturday, in terms of operating hours, but would also suggest that the, that these hours of operations include a condition that does not allow hauling, hauling or the in and out of trucks on Saturdays from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and that being because of traffic so, so intense in the lower part of the county during those time periods. Another thing is this permit be valid for, is valid for five years. In the ordinance,
Real complicated stuff, but it's important in this particular issue. What that hydrologic study indicated is that as part of the de-watering program that's proposed and asking us to lower the water levels so they can mine or excavate sand is to actually transfer or put some of that de-watered water into what's called a hydration ditch. So, as I said earlier, there's a subdivision located to the south of this mining operation. In the past, that subdivision has had some issues with water levels in their wells. Not sure the extent to which that is or is not connected to this mine, but as part of the hydrological study, what's being proposed is to excavate a 30-foot wide, eight-foot deep, about 1,500-foot-long ditch along that property line. And as they de-water the mining area, what they'll do is they'll put water, allow water to go into that ditch adjacent to the subdivision. So, in theory, what that does is by de-watering into this hydration ditch, they should be offsetting or minimizing any impacts of the groundwater table in the subdivision. So, again, that is a result of the hydrological study. Mr. Elliott can probably explain this better than I can, but it makes sense when you think about it, you're moving water closer to the area where you may have groundwater issues. And the de-watering system connects to the hydration ditch, so it all interrelates, it's all engineered, and eventually, as the water leaves the site, it has an outlet out towards the Currituck Sound and the swamp. Hopefully, that made sense. That is something they're doing to hopefully address some of the groundwater issues that have existed. As part of this request, you are issuing a use permit and you're required to make certain findings. In your staff report, we have outlined the findings you have to make and made recommendations for your consideration. I'm not going to read all those, but I will note that when this application started, staff did have concerns with some of the de-watering activities and some of the impacts on adjoining subdivision. Since this started, the applicant, Mr. Newbern, has went and replaced, I believe, paid for or replaced up to five wells on adjoining properties. They did the hydrological study and they're putting the hydration ditch along that property line, so at this point, staff does feel like this permit does not endanger the public health or safety. We have done the things they needed to do to help us make that finding. But we do have, in reviewing this, the Technical Review Committee or staff does recommend conditional approval. We have a couple of conditions we want to add or suggest you add to this. One being that the 50-foot-wide vegetative buffer be placed along the property line, along Kerituck Highway and Lot 11 of Meadow Lake subdivision, that the chapel property be screened on all sides. That's a little in-holding piece of property there on the front of the site. Any dead vegetation that was placed on Kerituck Highway from the old buffer requirement, that be replaced. There's some vegetation that was put in years ago that since died. All the existing vegetation on the northern property line where they've asked for the setback reduction, a condition that that be maintained as required by the ordinance. Based on some comments from the state, to, again, to minimize any de-watering impacts on the subdivision, that the maximum average depth of the excavation area be 25 feet with a maximum de-watering depth of 20 feet. Again, those numbers come from the state. And that discharge water samples be tested for solid turbidity pH and tested for those items quarterly. And that those quarterly tests be sent to the county for review. Also, that two monitoring wells be remain in place and continue to be tested as well. We've asked that these test results be sent to the county within 30 days of the reporting date. And three other things that we would ask the board to consider in terms of conditions. One is, in the old use permit, the hours of operation were seven to five, Monday through Friday, with maintenance permitted on the site on Saturdays from eight to 12. The new ordinance actually allows mining operations to be conducted from dawn to dusk Monday through Saturday. We would suggest that we use the dawn-to-dusk language Monday through Saturday in terms of operating hours, but would also suggest that the, that these hours of operations include a condition that does not allow hauling, hauling or the in and out of trucks on Saturdays from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and that being because of traffic so intense in the lower part of the county during those time periods. Another thing is this permit be valid for, is valid for five years. In the ordinance, we do have a section that says if a, if a mine operates for a period of five years without any kind of violations, they can then expand that mine with staff approval. Staff would ask that any, after five years' time, if there is any request for an expansion of the mine, that that be subject to a public hearing and come back before the Board of Commissioners for approval. And that's just given some of the history of the site. And then finally, last thing the board can consider, and the ordinance lays this out as an option, if you so choose, you may impose what's called a surety guarantee, or you can require the applicant to set aside money that the county holds in the event that adjoining properties have water issues with their drinking wells. That money can then be used to replace or have that situation remedied. And again, that's a decision the board can make. You can choose to have the applicant set aside a surety guarantee that the county manages, or otherwise, if we have a complaint of a drinking water issue, we would have to investigate that through a notice of violation process. So, that's an option the board has in terms of how you want to ensure that drinking water wells are protected and what level of performance guarantee you want to require. Planning Board heard this case at their July meeting, and they did recommend approval of the use permit with the staff recommendations. And they also echoed the hours of operation from dawn to dusk with no hauling on Saturday from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And then they also included in their recommendation that the use permit be valid for five years. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions the board has.
All right, questions for Mr. Woody?
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Setback reclamation, is that part of staff findings?
It is.
Hydration ditch, what you're talking about, is that something that's been verified by a professional engineer that will solve the water issue?
It is. They have a hydrological study that was sealed by a North Carolina licensed geologist that was also reviewed by our county engineer and as well as a professional engineer they've hired for their staff. So, there's been a lot of professionals look at that.
Monitoring wells, they've been in place in the past, correct?
They have, that's correct.
What happened?
The monitoring wells were in place, they were tested for several years, and then at some point, the applicant did not send in the test results anymore. And I will say too, that the county did not contact the applicant and ask him to send in the test results. We had a period of probably six or seven years where there weren't test results sent to the county, and the county didn't follow up.
That's past history, has it been taken care of now?
It has. They started, yes, yes, sir. They started testing in 2012. They have been sending us reports, and I think they continue to do so, and the county will continue to monitor those.
Dust to dawn. Define dust to dawn. I mean, I know what dust is, I think, but I mean, to give a specific time of dust to dawn, I mean, wouldn't it be simpler from a standpoint to have an hour? I mean, or sunup to sundown. At least each day, you know when sunup is, and each day, you know when sundown is.
Sunup to sundown would probably be better language. I think the intent was to allow the window of work to kind of move with, you know, the seasons, the amount of daylight you have. But I agree that sunup to sun, or sunrise to sunset is probably better language.
Would that be?
No problem.
Last one, Sunday operations. I heard nothing about Sunday operations.
None.
We haven't, we haven't, the county hasn't allowed those in the past, and I don't, to my knowledge, applicant hasn't requested Sunday operation either.
This is a new request, and there's nothing in the write-up about it, and nobody said anything about Sundays, so I was curious. So, Sundays will be off, it won't be, it'd be off.
Right now, it's off limits, yeah.
That's an emergency with a storm or something, but the county would be notified before that.
That answers my question, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions if I could. Mr. Woody? And I'm going to go into the past permit because it seems it's timely, and it doesn't really address what we're here talking about today, but it brought up some questions in my mind. Initially, this special use permit issued in 2002 required that there be two monitoring wells, is that correct?
That's correct.
And who required that those two monitoring wells be installed?
The county was at the permitting process.
And did the county subsequently make as part of its conditions for the issuance of that special use permit, a reporting period of time?
Yes, sir.
And you spoke briefly to it initially, but I believe there was a period of about eight years where the county never reviewed any of the reports because you didn't have And that was one of our conditions. In the past, there have been some problems with this that I think could, with this special use permit that was issued in 2002, that could have been avoided if the county hadn't dropped the ball. I'll ask, why did the county not follow through on its requirement that the applicant provide this data?
I can't answer that other than to say that the county should have been more diligent in what we did, and moving forward, we'll have to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Well, I guess, I personally find that unacceptable. We put in, in these special use permits, we as a sitting Board of Commissioners, these are probably one of the more contentious things that we have to hear because people will come in and complain, and I think this had a lot of people that were upset about it and didn't want it. So, we as a Board of Commissioners sitting here will mandate certain conditions and restrictions that are pursuant to the application or the issuance of that application. When we drop the ball, we as the county, drop the ball and don't follow through on our own requirements and restrictions, what happens, can happen in this case. Now, I don't believe the applicant even realized the majority of the problems until just recently. We have an obligation as Commissioners when we hear these special permits to represent not only the applicant and his vested rights, but also the surrounding, the neighborhood. And we dropped the ball on this, and we can't do that anymore. My question will be, I guess, what do we do, what does the county do? What's the county's policy on special use permits in reviewing and mandating that the conditions and restrictions that we, the Commissioners mandate, are checked and verified? Because I'll point out that in every one of these special use permits, we say, and I'll go into the verbiage here, but part of it is, because some of the uses that can be considered may be undesirable, it can be developed, subject to conditions of approval to minimize any negative effects on surrounding property. That's what every one of these special use permits, that's the language that they're predicated, that's the beginning, the portion of it. What do we do as a county to ensure that these special use permits, conditions and restrictions are honored or reviewed?
Currently, once, following the public hearing, we will notify the applicant of the permit and the conditions, and of course, we'll do an inspection before we do any kind of final approval or any certificate of documents or anything like that. So, I know that the staff does go out and ensure that these things are executed before the use begins, or in this case, before the use begins again. Following that, what, from that point forward, to be honest, we are generally complaint-driven in terms of enforcing permits and ordinances.
Well, if I could, and I've heard that since, I guess, my seven months on this board, about complaint-driven complaints. In other words, we rely on neighbor, turning on neighbor in order for us to go out, and it's also, I think, and I've talked about this before, I think that that's spot enforcement. In other words, some people, because they'll get complaints, will have to toe the line, but if you're lucky enough that your neighbor doesn't complain on you two miles down the road, you can continue doing whatever you're doing. And that just breeds, I think, ill will or issues amongst the constituents out there that you have what I would refer to as selective enforcement. Now, I think special use permits, this is my opinion, not the board's, but I think special use permits rise to a higher level than just general ordinances. I think special use permits, the board sits as a, in a quasi-judicial setting, and we look at these things and we agonize over them because there's two sides to every issue. So, we therefore then put conditions and restrictions. If they're not enforced, or if there isn't a set way that the county, a set procedure the county has to go out and see that this happens, the very thing that we don't want to happen, i.e. negative effects most around their properties, can and will happen. So, I think that I would suggest to this board that we would look at special use permits and the conditions and restrictions that we require rise to a higher level than complaint-driven. And I still have an issue with complaint-driven because I think that mandates that we have neighbor turn on neighbor. I just don't like that in order to have something done, but those are two different issues. I know in this particular situation, the applicant went out and did everything he could to make up for any issues or problems that he had in the past, and he didn't have to do it, he did do it. He went out and went the extra mile. I'm saying, I think that if the county had not dropped the ball, we, he would not have had to have done that, or at least to the extent that he has had to. So, I bring that up now because it was the first time I've seen where this was an issue. But upon the conclusion of this application, I would like to address something further with the board if I could relative to the overall treatment that the county gives special use permits and the conditions and restrictions that are imposed by the Board of Commissioners. If we're going to sit here and tell people during the special use permit that they have to do this, this, and this, and then we ignore it, the county ignores it, well, we're just wasting our time and effort. So, after we conclude this, I'd like to speak to that if I might.
Anyone else have any questions?
I would, Mr. Chairman, one thing. Mr. Woody, when are water samples taken and how often are they required?
They're taken quarterly, so four times a year. I don't remember the exact dates for this permit, what your schedule is.
We pull samples from the outfall before it goes to Currituck Sound. We take those samples quarterly, where they're tested for sediments, suspended solids, pH. We also pull samples directly from the monitoring wells annually. That was a condition of the original permit, and it's replaced today.
So, you pull the samples from the monitoring well once a year?
Yes, sir. Those are done, those are, those have a full analysis by a state-certified laboratory.
Is, if you have a problem with wells going dry or infusions of coliform pesticides or something like that, and you find that once a year, do you monitor more frequently after that?
In addition to the county requirement, the state also requires an annual analysis. If there is a problem, then they require us to go in there and recheck it monthly.
Is there anything or any place that you've been associated with since you're in the business where the monitoring is done, you know, semi-annually to give a better indication of exactly what's taking place, you know, in the mine and water quality?
Yes, sir, but like I say, our analyses, we do a complete herbicide pesticide analysis. I have seen cases at this mine where they have done herbicides, one sampling, and then six months later, they do a pesticide sampling. That's, that's the only semi-annual testing that I've seen.
So, if we could require in a special use permit that we have semi-annual sampling, would that place a hardship on the individual operator of the mine? Are they that expensive?
About $600.
$600?
Yes, sir.
For the well-being of the water in the areas surrounding the subdivision, I don't know, but I think probably we need to have water instead of, or the sampling done instead of just once a year, do it twice a year.
Okay.
To provide, you know, some safety for the people, and then you would know, hopefully, you know, what is going on with the water. Would that be too much to ask?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I would like to say one other thing.
Yes, sir.
There is one other method of sampling that we normally, in the old permit, they were requiring us or requesting us to do a water, groundwater level measurement in those same monitoring wells quarterly. During our first pre-application meeting with the Technical Review Committee, they asked us to increase that to monthly, and we have been doing so since.
So, we're doing monthly now?
You're doing it monthly now?
Yes.
Yes, sir, just to maintain and document.
If something pops up with any chemicals or any of that, then that's, we do it more, but we never had that problem. But we're doing modern and monthly now of the water level.
Of the water level?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Quantity. You're doing a quantitative monthly.
That's correct.
Correct.
Quality annual.
Has been annually, yes, sir.
So, we stepped up the, we stepped up the modern than once a month instead of, instead of once every, whatever, once a year.
Yeah, actually, we're doing about every two or three weeks.
And Commissioner Martin, the TRC recommendation for the permit for monitoring the quantity is quarterly.
All right.
They're doing monthly now, but we've recommended quarterly for that.
Okay. Well, I applaud them for doing it monthly right now if you see a problem. I don't think it would be.
No.
Yes, sir.
So, if we could do that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, could, for the record, could you both please tell us who you are and your interest to the, the agenda item for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is Ken Elliott, Elliott Consulting. I'm representing, I live in North Carolina. I'm representing Mr. Jeffrey A. Newbern Senior. He's the president and owner of Greenacre's Land Development, owner and operator of the Greenacre's Land Development Sand Mine in Georgeville.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? We'll close this item and ask the board for a recommendation.
I would move that we approve PB 1313 with staff findings and recommendation including case analysis. Now, my question would be to Mr. Woody. You indicated Technical Review Committee recommendations, and there are six of them. Will the motion, as I have it here, include those six items, or do you want me to?
Your motion includes those six items.
Very good.
And we wanted to go, I think there was discussion relative to monthly, was that your concern?
Yes, monthly and semi-annually on the quality.
And semi-annually on the quality. I would make a motion to approve it based on those conditions.
I second that. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might cash in that request I had for a few additional moments?
Absolutely.
Thank you. What I was talking about earlier relative to special use permits and the conditions and restrictions that are associated or attended with the, with those special use permits, it's my understanding that the county, in this particular instance, dropped the ball for about eight years, and again, that's unacceptable. I would ask that the county manager provide this board with a written response on what the county's policy is on addressing conditions and restrictions in special use permits mandated by the Board of Commissioners so that we could review that and, and address any shortcomings that we may find.
Is that a motion?
Does that need to be a motion?
Well, I think we can certainly direct that. I don't know that you need a motion, but we'll go ahead and make it official.
I'll make that as a motion then.
I'll second that.
And, and I think that when it comes back, it needs to be codified as part of our policy manual for Unified Development.
I would so request.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next item is presentation and consideration of design build contract for new animal shelter. Mr. Scanlon, it's your turn.
At one of your previous meetings, the board had asked if I would put some information together to kind of explain or put the animal shelter in context of where we are and how we got to where we are today. So, I put that, a presentation together. I wish all of our capital projects got the amount of public conversation that this one seems to have gotten between your meeting last Commissioners' meeting and this Commissioners' meeting. It's good to see this level of public input into a project. Unfortunately, though, is projects of this nature, there's a, there's a lot of passion behind it, there's a lot of support, there's a lot of opposition, and unfortunately, at times, there can be a lot of misinformation and inaccurate information that also circulates. So, as I update you on how we got to where we are, I'd like to take a moment too and address some of the information that has been circulated that is, that is less than accurate. This is the site that we're talking about. It's, it's got the animal shelter and animal control, both in this facility. This is off of Airport Road at our airport, and it's just, just south of the Maple Park. This is a comment, a letter the Board of Commissioners received as of, I believe, this weekend, and it comes from the Animal Assistance League, and you can see, it says, "Request Proposals That Was Put Out For Bids By The County Total Combine Animal Shelter and Animal Control Facility Of 10,000 Square Foot Is Reduction Of More Than 25% From The Size Recommended By The County Feasibility And Planning Study That Was Brought On By Mr. Daggett." I'll show you in a few minutes why that statement is actually incorrect. This, the letter goes on to talk about, at this size, I, it will house slightly more animals at the current number housed as at the, let me say, animals at the current number housed by the shelter and animal control, but has little capacity to accommodate future growth. I'll also show why that statement is incorrect without expanding the facility, and we'll talk about how that is also incorrect. Well, let's start from the very beginning, why we're here, and the need for an animal shelter. So, why are we having the conversation about replacing the animal shelter? There's actually two main drivers of this conversation. The first one is, the current shelter has reached its useful life, it's basically obsolete. And the second one is, it interferes with the next expansion of the airport. Speaking to obsolescence, they say picture says a thousand words, I'll just show you pictures and it can speak for itself. Anybody who has not had a chance to go out to the shelter, we certainly can arrange for them to go out and take a tour, and they can see that the building really has, it has met its useful life. I'm going to comment, in a few minutes, I'll comment, these are dog runs, this is, just so you can take a look at those, there's another example of that. It's important, I'll make some comments later on that. That certainly speaks to the obsolescence of the building. The second thing is the expansion of the airport. This is the master plan of the area, you can see in the red, that area today is actually Airport Road, it's the entrance to Maple Park and the airport. That is proposed to be the southern parallel taxiway for the airport. We are in line to get a $2.5 million grant from the federal and state government to install that facility. There is setback requirements and restrictions on that project, and as you can see from where the animal shelter currently exists, it's right in the middle of the setbacks, if not the project area. So, that facility will have to be relocated before we can move forward with that particular project.
Along with others, correct?
Along with forestry. We believe the shelter there and the ball field properly can stay, the totlock can stay, the skateboard park will be in conflict also. So, we start looking at the need for a building, is, the next question comes up, which has generated a lot of conversation, is what is the appropriate size for a new animal shelter? And I'd like to talk about this, and again, two main topics. There's the physical dimensions of a facility and a capacity of a facility, and I like to address those separately. First of all, to put things in context, you can see on this map here again where the existing animal shelter is, and the location of the new proposed shelter is back over, it'd be just to the right-hand side of Aviation Parkway, just across the road from where Cooperative Extension and the Community Center is located at. In terms of acreage, this is the current compound, it is less than one acre, it's about three-quarters of an acre in size. This is the master plan for the Maple Park or the Maple, the Commerce Area, and you'll see that we have five acres that have been dedicated for the new animal shelter. Talking in dimensions, this is a study that in 2011, the Board of Commissioners contracted for. It's a feasibility and planning study, it gets a lot of comments and quotes from this. We contracted with Mr. Daggett to come in and to assist and help determine- We contracted with Mr. Daggett to come in and to assist and help determining and answering the question of what is the appropriate size of a facility would be. This is a kind of a simplistic formula, but this is the basics of a model that Mr. Daggett used. He starts out with the overall county population. He applies a statewide statistic which helps determine of that population, of the people population, how many animals would be in that population. You apply a statistic of, of the animal owners, how many, what percentage of animal owners would have, opt to relinquish their animal at any given time? And when you do that math, it determine, it'll come up with how many animals that we need to address as far as sheltering and care for. When you combine that with the length of stay, those two factors together will speak to the size of an animal shelter. The very top one and the very bottom one, certainly the very bottom one, are variable inputs that can go into the model. We had, we heard back in the very beginning of this conversation several months ago, there was literature that was passed around, and it referenced a 14,000-square-foot building, and it talked about how we were cutting the building from 14,000 down to the 10,000. I'd like to show you where I believe that comment came from. And it comes from this. This is from page seven of this feasibility study. And first thing I want to pack that is, I've got some things highlighted to emphasize. You can first see is, what Mr. Daggett did was he maximized the inputs into his model, maximize population, maximize length of stay. If you do that maximization, it generates a building size of just under 14,000 square foot. But he goes on to say, "This represents the shelter size necessary to accommodate the maximum desired length of stay, and will create more space than is required to meet the project, the project's needs of either population," either population being dogs and cats. "We believe using the averages rather than the maximum is the, as recommended by ALAL represents a more balanced approach." This tells me Mr. Daggett did not recommend a 14,000-square-foot building. In fact, a 14,000-square-foot building never did exist. It was determined by just putting a maximized inputs into the model. This is a document, I know this is hard to read, I'm going to blow this up in a few seconds. This is a page out of the same feasibility study that was presented to the board commissioners at your last meeting. What I want to do is draw your attention to that area there, which I'm going to enlarge here. This is using, this is the model results using averages. When Mr. Daggett started this process, he started it before the 2010 census data was, was published and put forth. So he used the 2,000 data when he did this. The very first input, as I mentioned, is population. So I want to draw your attention as we look the next couple of slides. You see 2010, 2020, 2030, projected population by the census, the 2,000 census of the population of Curtza County. You're doing the, the percentage averages, the state average of animal ownership, the relinquishment rate comes back and shows you the population of animals that we need to consider in the shelter. And it goes on, during this calculation, it recommended a shelter size of a little over 10,500 square foot. In the report, it talks about because we're combining animal control into this, the need to put another 3,000 on the building to address animal control. And so this is where I believe, once we got beyond the 14,000-square-foot conversation, we started seeing numbers in the 13,000-square-foot range. The next thing did, this is another page of the same study, and I'm going to blow up this section right here. The same inputs he runs through, and he says, "Let's take a look at that same shelter, that 10,350-square-foot shelter or 530-square-foot shelter, and run it through the population projection of the year 2020 to see, is that shelter adequate for the near future?" And this particular model comes back and shows it is not adequate. In fact, it's a little, a little over, a little under 4,000 square foot short of meeting the demands. The problem with these two schedules that I just showed you that was handed out to you, as I've mentioned a couple of times, is they were based on the 2,000 census. These are draft reports. Before the report was finalized, I asked Mr. Daggett, because the 2010 census data had been generated, if he would please rerun the model using the 2010 census. And I'm going to show you the results of that. But before I do, I want you to take a quick look at, notice the population projections. This is the 2,000 population projections. 2010 to, 2020, can't read them off the top of the screen, looks like it was 34,000.
514.
514 was the projection. In 2030, 47,000 people were projected in the 2,000 census. That was extrapolating the huge amount of growth that we had, but as we know, when the recession hit, those certainly were not realized. When you take the model, and this is, again, pages right out of the final report, same page, same information, going to highlight the same information, now you're going to run the same model using the 2010 census data. First of all, I want to note that you can note is how drastically the population projections decreased in 2010 versus the 2,000 population projections. 2030 was 47,000, this is 24. You rerun the model, but all we did, again, was change the census data, and now the building comes out at 7,900 square foot, not 10,500. The second thing I want to show you is, this is the second page of that. I'm going to highlight this information right here. This is doing the same thing we did before, and take that same building and run it on the 2020 projection to see, in the near term, does this, this building meet our needs? And as you look over into the box, it does meet the needs as projected through 2020. So taking that information and kind of codifying it here and listing it, the projection is a building of 7,690. Again, adding the animal control for 3,000 brings you to a building suggested range of I want to take a look at it a different way, same, same conversation, how to appropriately size a building. This is what we currently exist here. You see the 1987 building, which was, again, it was modified or added on to in the 1990s, and you can see the main building is a little over 3,000 square foot. There are some state line builders, some sheds out there that also supports the operation. And then you have the animal quarantine building in the, in the back. So, and here we are listing that out. So 3,700 square foot is what is allocated currently to the care of animals at our shelter, and animal quarantine area is 1,740. So we have about 5,400 square foot currently on the compound. So one of the things I want to look at is, what if we went in and doubled the square footage offered to animals and leave the, the area for the area of quarantine the same? So just simply doubling the, again, the, the animal space in the shelter, leaving animal quarantine the same, gives about 9,148 square foot. I want to pause here because this is important to kind of understand. When we put this facility out for RFP, for Request For Proposals, and we were going to get submittals, we have to come up with some kind of criteria so we have a level playing field, so everybody is submitting something that can be comparable. One of the things that we did was we took a 10,800-square-foot building, we took a 9,148-square-foot building, and we averaged those basically and came out with, let's use 10,000 square foot as a standard, so that everybody submitting would submit on the something that would be comparable. There's nothing magical about 10,000 square foot. No one said the building's going to be 10,000 square foot. The building, when it is done, may be a little bit bigger, it certainly may be a little bit smaller. So as of right now, there is no given square footage, and that building has not been presented to the board for your approval. We simply needed to come up with a square footage, again, that would put everything on an equal playing field. So we went out with 10,000 square foot, and those two calculations is where that number was generated from. Let's talk about capacities, because this is important to note also. Last week in the daily, excuse me, last week in the Virginia Pilot, there was a story, and these two quotes or these two comments were coming out of that story. "The current facility can house 30 dogs and 117 cats in roughly 4,000 square feet of dedicated shelter space. Curtis' new facility would house 34 dogs and 124 cats with a room for temporary cages and a 7,000-square-foot space." That doesn't make any sense, and I'm going to explain why. First of all, this implies in some fashion that we're going to add 3,000 square foot onto a building and only pick up four dogs and seven cats. That doesn't make any sense. The trick here, or the, the confusing part of this, goes to capacity, and it speaks to the difference between dog runs and spots. Dog runs is a fixed number, and spots is a variable. The easiest way to explain this, to kind of put it in my mind so I understand it, is if you were going to build an office building, and you built 10 offices, that's a fixed number. How many people you put in the offices is a function of how you operate your business. If you put two people in every office, you would have a spot of 20, but you'd have a fixed capacity of 10. So let's go back to this comment. Here's the first one. This one's actually fine. "The current facility can house 30 dogs and 117 cats." Let's just talk about the dogs and focus on the dogs. The current shelter has 14 fixed spaces, so when the comment is 30 dogs, that's a spot comment. And what it implies is the operation is putting, on average, two animals in a kennel to come up with spots. There's nothing wrong with that, that statement's fine. This statement is where the issue becomes. This statement says, "34 dogs and 124 cats." That is talking about a fixed number. So we're comparing a fixed number to a variable number, because although the numbers aren't exactly correct, you'll see in a few minutes, when the consulting team comes up, they've got 43 fixed kennels for dogs. So if you wanted to make these two comments comparable, you'd have to either pick fix to fix or spot to spot. So what would actually, the comment should have been, if we're going to do with spots, the 30 dogs that our current capacity is would be compared to 86 dogs in this facility. And here it goes. "The existing shelter has 14 fixed spaces for dogs, 93 for cats. The feasibility study used numbers 22 and 86. The presentation you'll see in a few minutes, we're actually looking at right now in design, 43 versus 134." So kind of taking the project as a whole, we're going from less than an acre to a five-acre site, from 5,400 square foot to 10,000 square foot, and you're going from capacities of 1493 to 43134. So depending on how you want to look at and what parameter you want to do, the building is, is at least doubling, and if you want to look at capacities, it's more than two and a half times what we currently have. When we go back in, and you're going to see this in a few minutes, and I'll preface this comment, too, I'm going to introduce you to the firm that we would like to recommend to move forward with the design. They have given, or they put together a floor plan for us to look at, and so over all the people that submitted, we looked at the approach that they would go to a facility, and we chose who we thought had the best approach. That floor plan will be modified, guaranteed it will be modified. It has not been vetted by the staff, and it certainly hasn't been publicly vetted to any point. So it will be, it will be modified. But if you go back and look at what was submitted, even though the feasibility study talked about 3,000 for animal control, the building that was actually submitted was, a little about, a little over 2,000 was for animal control, and the building for, the animal space was 7,080. If you recall from a previous slide, I think if you doubled the space for the animal shelter, you know, it was a little bit less than that. So we're actually more than doubling the amount of space in the facility that we're providing for the animals. So where do we go from here? On March 28th, the county released a Request For Proposal For Design Construction Of A 10,000-Square-Foot Animal Shelter. Again, nothing magical about 10,000, but I can show you how we came up with that number. The final building may or may not be 10,000 square foot. It hasn't been completely vetted and designed. The board commissioners will see that before that building is approved. Staff did an internal assessment on a 10,000-square-foot building on what we thought the total project would cost for a 10,000-square-foot building, and we came up with 2.5 million, which is a budget number. It is not a number that you have committed to build the building. At this stage, the building isn't designed and completed, so we don't know exactly how much that building is going to cost. So that's a budget figure, and I'll show that to you in a few minutes. The responses were due back into the county on May 7th. We received seven responses. We're doing a design-build, which means we're looking for both an architectural design team as well as a general contractor to build it. We think this, that way of approaching a project is preferable. You have a lot of input, a lot of flexibility through the design to look at what the cost of the building's going to do. When the general contractor works with the architect, they can do value engineering on the fly to help you control the cost and materials by keeping the building at a quality building. So we are doing a design-build. We did have, one of those teams that submitted was considered non-responsive. They submitted a budget that exceeded 2.5 million, so we did not review theirs. So we had six that we reviewed. I put a review team together of our engineering department, public works department, the planning staff, the sheriff's office, the current contractor, Animal Assistance League, and myself, all sat down and independently reviewed the six submittals. We got back together to compare our score notes. From that, we had two projects or two teams that kind of came to the top. We had additional questions for them. Animal Assistance League and the engineering department sat down and went back through those and answered, or asked some qualifying questions. From that, we had a team that we felt like would be the best team to represent the interest and the approach that we would have in an animal shelter, and that recommendation is coming from, is unanimous from your review team, so the folks that sat on it, we all agreed. In fact, the team we want to present, and I'll present to you in a few minutes, is the architectural team of Waller Todd &amp; Sadler with Fortexico Corporation as the general contractor. Here is the budget that was put together. We anticipate a 10,000-square-foot building would roughly cost 1.6 million, and you can see the other things that go into the project. You've got site work, you've got to clear the land. We are anticipating the possibility of having to undercut and backfill portions of that land. We learned that from other buildings we put out there, so there's some of that in there. That's parking, that's light, that's getting wastewater to the site, it's getting power to the site, it's equipping the building, it's putting signage on the building, that's the professional fees for the project. It is a budget, again, the, the submittal actually came in for a little bit less than this. When we complete the actual design of the facility, we'll be able to bring back to you a number that is more accurate about what the building would cost. Again, this is a budget figure. The design will be, it'll be vetted by your staff. We have talked to the contracting team. There'll be at least one public charrette, where the general public will be invited to a facility where they will lay out all the designs. The public will have input and comments on the building, so the design team will take all this input and come back with a recommendation to the board of commissioners, what time you'll be able to prove. So tonight, the review team is recommending that we move forward in contracting with the design-build team to start the design process. Tonight, you have not committed to building anything. You haven't committed to a price. You haven't committed to a square footage of the building. At a future date, the design team will be bringing back to you a recommended building for your approval. So you're not actually approving a building tonight, and that's important in your motion to realize you're just, you're approving the design team. That's the facility. And so with that, I would like to introduce, we have, we've asked the design team to come forward tonight so they can introduce themselves to you, so you can learn who they are, what past experience in projects they've had that are similar to ours, projects they've done together as a design team, because they have worked together before. And they want to go through, real briefly, show you the design that they submitted to the staff. And again, I'd like to make this, just comment is, although you are going to see some elevations, the elevations probably won't change a whole lot from what you're going to see tonight for what the final building will look like, but the floor plan you're going to see tonight, I fully anticipate, will change as it goes through this very vetting, public vetting process. So just kind of keep that in mind as you see the presentation. But I'd like to ask you all to come up and introduce yourself to the board.
Thank you, Dan. My name is Don Adams. I'm the president of Fortexico Corporation. We're a general contractor that is centered in Norfolk, Virginia, in the Tidewater area. We also have offices in New Bern, North Carolina, and Richmond. We're primarily a design-build, design-assist contractor. We've been in business for 37 years. We do a lot of work with the U.S. Navy, do a lot of work with all the major municipalities in the Tidewater area. We also do work with all the major hospitals, EVMS, and such. Our focus is on design-build, and it has been over the past 15 years in particular. We have 138 employees. They go from North Carolina all the way up to Fredericksburg, so we're across the central part of, of the mid-Atlantic states. Our work, especially in this style, we like to work with, with owners that develop the budgets initially, develop what we call menus as such, and especially in this case, this project, when it came up, we saw the RFP came out, and we've worked with our partner, Waller Todd &amp; Sadler, on many other projects, but in particular, we like the fact is that it was a fluid budget. It was something that we would help you develop, and realizing that upfront, we can get you the best bang for the buck, we can answer all your questions, we can make sure that the end user gets what they want, the budget's met, and that the time of delivery is, also meets with that. With that said, I'm going to let Waller Todd &amp; Sadler have a brief overview, as Dan said, of the project, of this 10,000-square-foot plus or minus morph here, and let you show us what, show us what they've been working on with us over the past three months. Howard?
Thank you, Don. Which one? I don't want to push the wrong one. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Howard Collins with Waller Todd &amp; Sadler Architects, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'd like to give you just a very brief overview of some of our experience working with animal shelters, working with Fortexico Corporation. And then when you get out of the way, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Costello, and he'll tell you a little bit more about the plan that's been developed thus far. And hopefully, this is going to advance. How about that? It does work. Our firm is established back in the mid-'60s in Portsmouth, Virginia. We've been in business ever since then. We have 28 employees, and we stay about that range. We have nine architects on staff. Our primary focus is municipal work, state work, and federal work. Federal work makes up about half of that. Municipal work makes up about 30%, and then the rest is state work. We do full-service architecture, construction management, and design-build. We've done design-build now for about the last 10 years or so. We've worked very successfully with Don and with Vortexco. This is a slide of some relevant experience, some of our recent animal shelter experience. The one on the upper left is in Suffolk. That's a building. That's a building that was actually added on to. The dark pink area is the additions, the light area was the original. It was about 3,600 square feet added to that building. It was completed about two years ago for a cost of about $1.5 million. So it's a total square footage of about 8,200 square feet. The slide, the building at the bottom is an interesting project. It's actually a special operations forces facility at Little Creek Amphibia Space, and it's an animal control building for the working dogs that the seals use, very special, very special animals. The building on the upper right is a building that Dan has designed just recently. It's under construction up in Newport News. It's a joint-use animal shelter for Newport News, Hampton, Pecosin, and York County. They pooled their resources, and it's under construction right now. It'll open this fall. It's about an $8 million, 30,000 square foot animal shelter, brand new. It's about 50% through completion right now. This is some projects that we've worked on with Vortexco over the years. We've done a number of projects. The one on the upper left is another special operations forces building at Little Creek Amphibia Space in Fort Story. It's just being completed right now. Lower left, we designed Coleman Place Elementary School in Norfolk a few years ago, about an $18 million project that Vortexco built. The upper right was an interesting project. That was the historic preservation of the Adam Thorogood House in Virginia Beach, building that was built back in 1719. It's the oldest residence in Virginia Beach, and we did a very detailed and careful restoration of that project, and Vortexco did a fabulous job on that. And then we did a Cypress Park project out in Suffolk, Virginia with Vortexco, where we did fields and athletic, an athletic complex. So our experience in animal shelters and with, working with Vortexco has been very successful with that. Unless there's any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and he can take over from here.
I'm Dan Costello with Waller Todd &amp; Sadler Architects. I'm the project architect for the facility we just put up together, Peninsula Regional Animal Shelter, and I enjoy working on it, a lot of fun. I'm going to look at this floor plan here and just talk about some key things in the In response to the RFP for Currituck County, we, there was a number of things in there that they wanted, kind of a wish list for the project. And these are some of them that we responded to. Maximum controlled natural daylighting. Important in any building with people as well as animals. We provide large overhangs, ample fenestration windows. And what's really important there is the proper orientation to the southerly exposure and the northerly light. A big item that was stressed in the RFP, linear design for potential expansion. And as you saw with the Suffolk facility, it was a little bit linear. We were able to go out on either end because we had that flexibility on site. With the size of our site, and we felt that a linear design was most important. This one's kind of L-shaped, as you can see. There's kind of the center intersection there is the lobby. That's kind of where the public comes in. They would either go into directly behind to the canine section, or they'd go take a left to the feline section. Another important item is controlled division of public and private spaces. The animal control officers have a lot of activity, things that they must take care of, responsibilities that really shouldn't be open to the public. Euthanasia, lots of untidy things that they have to do day-to-day. Concrete exterior walls and backup emergency power. Being that it's a hurricane-prone region, we thought that was important to try to give a very durable building. With the budget where it was, and the type of facility this is, being an animal shelter where cleanliness is probably top priority, we thought that was very important to come up with a very durable material that we can clean and scrub and keep disinfected. So we have all concrete exterior walls, all concrete kennel walls. Actually, the kennel walls are glazed masonry. And we were able to squeeze in backup emergency power into the budget, which we thought was important. The buildings are very climate-controlled. You have your air for humans, you have air for animals, and then also you have animals sick and healthy in that mix as well. So it's important to have the backup power to keep those systems running. And then the biggest challenge, of course, is to provide as much housing as we can for the animals. Currently, we're at, we're able to house 43 dogs in kennels, and we have cages for 134 cats. In addition to that, there is some floor space available in feature rooms and that sort of thing. There's always a little bit of room for improvement on that. We'll do what we can to make sure that happens. I'm just going to go through a few more slides now. This is kind of hard to read, but it's a black-and-white site plan of a general layout we've provided. There's lots of ample dog yards, animal yards outside. With our climate here, we should be able to utilize that as much as possible. There's a kind of a bird's-eye view of the facility. The larger dark area there is your entrance. There it is again. Just a walk up to the entry. We would follow the Currituck Commerce Park building guidelines. The brick veneer, the blue standing seam metal roof. And our idea was to control costs and kind of introduce another material into that palette is to, with concrete, there's a little bit of flexibility there. You can actually pattern it any way you choose. And we're going to go with kind of a board and batten look. So maybe some of your smaller facilities could utilize that material. There's a rear shot of the, some of the animal yards with sun shades. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Mr. Chairman, we happen to answer any questions that you might have of me or the consultants, but it's the review team's recommendation that the board authorized the staff to move forward with executing the contract with the design-build team to move forward with the design of the animal shelter. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
I have a question for the candidate. What was his, the square footage of the Suffolk addition? I'm sitting here looking at it on the iPad. You said they added 3,600 square foot?
3,600.
What was, what was it prior?
Well, the total is 8,215, so the difference is less...
Okay, I got you.
A little bit less than 5,000 originally.
Does that include animal control, or is that just animals?
That's just...
That's, that's the, that's a little bit of both. There's some animal control in that, in that facility.
And Suffolk's population has 85,000 people, and Currituck's has 25,000? Give or take a few? All right.
Yes, sir.
Is the Suffolk shelter, when you say concrete, I'm assuming that's block?
Concrete block.
Yeah, concrete, that's cinder block.
Masonry.
Masonry. Now, the shelter for Currituck is actually a concrete sandwich panel. So you're talking four inches of concrete with three inches of insulation in between them. It can withstand winds of 210 miles an hour. Gives you an R-value of roughly 24.
Okay, and cost comparison between that and regular cinder block?
Because the, because the cost of labor is constantly going up...
Can I actually come up so we can get you on the mic?
With, with the cost of labor increasing constantly, it's a, it's a much easier product to control that cost. And so it's actually more favorable to use a concrete panel.
So I'm assuming these are like panels, like set up like the, along the interstates, where they just set concrete?
We've used them in numerous SEAL Team facilities because they're required for their force protection. But it's a, you know, in doing so, we've learned that it's actually a pretty cost-effective product. If you, if you tell here the facility, it's essentially a nine-foot-four panel all the way around the building, and we maintained a 40-foot width to further economize the building. So with the reproducible pattern of 40 feet and nine-foot-four walls, it was pretty cost-effective, and it beat out masonry construction.
What's, if I got, I got one more question. I know you said the acreage is five acres. How much of that, I'm looking at the drawing, which I'm assuming that's the building, the square footage of a fenced-in area, what's, I mean, I know what we have now is...
You know, in the RFP process, we weren't really given a, an official site plan, but we were given the plot of land. It was in there in the package. And this takes up roughly, I would say, 1/6 of that land.
With that, I mean, it looked like in that picture back, there was a little fenced-in area. I mean, what's...
Yeah, I mean, let's see here. Yeah, this, I have a, I don't really have it on this, on the entire plot, but this takes up roughly 1/6. So if you took, if you took it and divided it in six pieces, we're on the top-left corner where the radius of the aviation parkway is. I believe it's Aviation Parkway. So we're roughly 1/6 of the site right now.
So you're looking for, I mean, a little less than an acre.
A little less than an acre of a fenced-in...
Yes.
Fenced-in area. Okay, thank you.
And of course, it should be noted that the sighting is very important for that flexibility for future, if it's ever to expand in the future.
Yes, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, oh, you got another question?
No, I got one more, but I'll wait.
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay. How strict is the criteria for the park to use a stand-and-seam roof? Is that something that, that we require?
It is a requirement of the county, yes.
Okay.
So can he say that, we missed that over here? What...
The stand-and-seam roof is a metal roof. They roll, they roll it out, but I'm just, I know how expensive it is, so I'll just, just ask.
Well, I got, I need to ask a couple of questions. This is the first I've seen of this tonight, and I can't tell how the inside interior space is laid out. Is there duplicative spaces in there? I mean, restrooms, conference rooms, break rooms? I mean, what kind of stuff is there in there that we have two of?
There's definitely a public-private division. And the ACO, the animal control officers, it's not a public space. They do have their own bathrooms and showers, and locker rooms in their facility. And there, if you can see the floor plan, they're over in the left side of this alleyport. And then there's, of course, there's restrooms for the public and the shelter personnel. And they're without showers right now.
Well, I see a big conference room up there and a...
I don't know if you just can zoom in or not, if who has the control.
As you're sitting here, looking at the design, if, to the left-hand side, extreme left-hand side, is the animal control section. The white square in the middle is a alleyport, alleyport being where a vehicle can actually drive into the building. You can close gates around it, so if the animal escapes, it's still confined within the area. And then everything to the right of the alleyport and to the rear is the animal shelter facility. And what you heard is the, there's administrative areas dedicated to both animal control and the operations of the shelter, and so there is some duplication of some of the admin space.
Yeah, if I was to walk you out of the alleyport down the hall there, the next, say, six spaces are kind of shared. They're still very public spaces, but they are animal control and shelter personnel, and just no public. And there's a surrender lobby, there's basically kind of processing areas for animals first come in. They get weighed up and cleaned and that sort of thing, tested. And then you go into more of the feline adoption areas, and then the main lobby. And beyond that main lobby is all the admin area for the, for the shelter personnel. And then the entire wing you see in the back there, that's, that's the canine kennels.
And what effect does length of stay have on the size?
That's a good question. To me, it's a matter of how many dogs you have, and I guess that fluctuates constantly.
The longer, the longer you want to keep animals, to increase the opportunity for them to be adopted, will increase the size of the building because you, we'll have to have more space to accommodate the animals.
What does our ordinance say?
Four feet by six feet minimum.
No, our ordinance, it's either five or seven days. It's either five or seven days.
The length of stay for cats or dogs?
Yes, in our ordinance.
Does it matter if they have a collar or not?
It, it doesn't matter.
Now, is that strays, or is that surrenders, or is that what's, I mean, it's new to me. I'm just...
Yeah, it's, it's been in the ordinance for a long time. We certainly, it's not how we have encouraged the current operator to manage the shelter, but by ordinance, it's either, I can't, it's either five or seven. I'll get to get that clarified for you. But it doesn't distinguish the animals. It's just length of stay is five to seven days.
Mr. Patrick, do you have something?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? What?
We've got a whole list of people that wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go for it.
But, Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment again on this. I know the board has not, I mean, this is the first time you're actually, this facility has not been completely vetted by staff. There will be a public process where the public will have an opportunity to look at it and comment on it. We will sit down with the folks, the design team, to look at certainly value engineering opportunities. I fully anticipate by the time we bring something back to you, it won't literally look exactly like what's being presented to you today. There will be some level of modifications, although the elevation, I think the elevation is pretty close to what you'll see, but the square footage of the building could be affected.
But through value engineering, you can also cut some of the cost, projected cost?
Yes, sir.
And that's all stuff that we'll be looking at and have the opportunity, as well as the public, will have the opportunity to visit.
Yes, sir. That'll be the process that will occur over the next couple of months, and then we'll be bringing back to you for your final approval, the actual facility that will look to be built. But it'll be, it'll be a public process. We discussed with the design team, at least holding one charrette where the general public, again, will be invited out, can review the different designs, different elevations, can make comments on it. And we found in previous projects that ends up having a better overall design, better overall facility.
This is the process we followed with their previous building?
Yes, sir, it is.
Nothing different?
Nothing different.
I've read so many things that we were doing, I just didn't know.
No, this is, we'll anticipate following the same process we followed on the last, I mean, on team buildings that we built.
Yes, sir.
Can we make a motion to approve the team and still hear public comments after that?
Sure.
Well, I've got a whole bunch of people signed up. Do you want to do a motion first?
I would...
No, my, my question is, can, I want everybody to have a chance to talk, but I would like to know, can we go ahead and make a motion? I think Mr. Commissioner Allen's going to make a, or somebody's going to make a motion to approve. Can we approve the team, move forward? They can leave, and then we can hear the public comments about where we go from here.
That's certainly to your discretion.
How about if someone has an objection about the people that we're using? That's what we're getting ready to vote on.
Yeah, I'd rather let everybody speak, and they certainly need to hear what the public has to say as well.
Exactly.
Good, bad, and ugly. Because you know what? We're getting ready to hear it. So we want you to, we want you to share in the joy with us.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And looking at the facility, I'm assuming what he showed, the far closest to Dan on our screen, that's the animal control side, and the main entrance is the...
Far left.
Far left.
Far left is animal control.
Is there a fenced-in area where, like they were saying before, you're bringing up...
That's alleyport right there.
Right there?
Yeah, you literally drive into the building there. You drive through the building.
I got you. I see it now.
You see Roger George, yes. So the animal control will be in a controlled environment when they release it, they take the dog out of the animal?
And all those things...
Animal, the vehicle.
All those things are things that we'll talk about at a future time.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else? If not, I'm gonna start calling people. Mr. Scanlon, you're in charge of time. First person up is Ms. Polly Gregory. And please, everybody, restate your name and address for the record.
My name is Polly Gregory, 106 Anna's Way, Grandy. As a resident of Currituck County, I am asking you to give serious reconsideration to spending $2.5 million for an animal shelter. As the Director of the Lower Currituck Food Pantry, I see hungry people grateful for the small amount of food that we give them each month. We are feeding about 300 families a month, which amounts to 900 individuals. During the summertime, the seasonal employment has not created a lesser demand for our food. In fact, for the month of July, which is usually lower numbers because they do have seasonal work, we serve 318 families, that's 978 people. And I had a note yesterday, we will expect more for the month of August because the food stamp program has some kind of problem, and the families are not getting their food stamps. The truck came today with my delivery, and I had half the amount. How and where the food's gonna come from, but I'll find it. I know we have children who are without food during the weekend. They depend on the Backpack for Children program. There are 115 children, elementary children, who depend on this food for the weekend. As a volunteer with the Interfaith Community Outreach, I see the needy and the homeless people seeking shelter. Currituck County has absolutely nothing for the homeless people. They live in the woods throughout our county, border to bridge, men, women, and children. As a friend of the Currituck Free Dental Clinic, I see people in pain and in need of dental care they cannot afford. Their health is affected. The clinic has given over $275,000 worth of free dental care in just a little more than a year that they've been in operation. Dr. Hauser began this as a service to Currituck County. He is now serving nine counties. The patients are being sent to him by the social services and health departments of these counties. Not one of these counties is giving him any financial support. I love animals too, however, I love my fellow man more, and I feel strongly about their welfare. That shelter, a shelter, would do wonders for the homeless. Those funds would do wonders for those in need of the basics of life, the basics that we take for granted. And I ask you, the Commissioners of our Currituck County, to consider the health and welfare of the citizens you have been elected to serve. That $2.5 million can and should be spent more wisely.
Thank you. Ms. Doris Flora?
My name is Doris Flora, and I live at 430 Carrot Oak Highway in Moyoc, North Carolina, the largest growing district in Currituck County. I do believe that possibly we do need an animal shelter. It's got to be moved anyway, we understand that, for the benefit of the airport, I understand that, but I think really and truly, you have a challenge before you. $2.5 million is a big chunk of change. You are dealing with projected figures. One of the pictures we saw earlier was that they had just added on 3,000 and some square feet to their shelter, build something that can be added on to fluently and easily in the future. Nobody loves animals any more than I do, and you have a challenge before you. I challenge these people to think about what we have here. I've been a volunteer in Currituck County for more than 50 years, and I continue to do it. I serve the senior citizens we have in our county. They need more volunteers to deliver meals. They hunt every month for people to put on to, just for the Moyoc, just for the Moyoc delivery, and I'm not sure what the other is, but volunteers are great. They have volunteers, but we are free volunteers. We get nothing for it, and we spend our own gas money to drive the mile to mile and a half, or five or 10 miles, or whatever it takes to get these people. These people only see me maybe twice a month. That's true, but they see people five days a week. This is the only contact that they have out with the public, so there are needs with our senior deliveries. Also, sometimes I see the food looks a little bit cut short, and we need to think about them, because all of us are going to be at that point one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia Sykes?
My name is Virginia Sykes, I live at 111 Mallard Drive in Currituck, North Carolina. I would like to ask Mr. Scanlon if he can show on the screen, I'm not sure if you can, or if not, maybe read some information from the study that you were just quoting.
You can read it.
Okay. On page 17 of the feasibility study, at the bottom of the page, after a discussion of the various parts of the shelter that would be involved, that we need to keep in mind, we're talking two buildings and one, we're talking animal control and the animal shelter. Total recommended shelter square footage, 10,575 square feet. Total animal control facility square footage, 3,140 square feet for a recommended initial facility size, initial facility size of 13,715 square feet. And then in the appendix... Whoops, I just lost my place on it, but... It refers to the length of stay calculations based on the 2010 census data. That's in the booklet that Mr. Scanlon was just quoting from. If my understanding is correct, and please correct me if I am wrong, because I try very hard to be accurate, like one of the things that was flashed on the screen, I don't believe I ever said to the newspaper it was not expandable, for example. I've understood that from the outset. But my understanding is that the funding for this project, which is, by the way, within the parameters I could read to you from the feasibility study, and I'm sure Mr. Scanlon has seen that also, that goes up to about $2.64 million was the part that was recommended. Anyway, I understand that it's coming from funds that are not from our tax base, that are not taking, it's not taking food out of the mouths of babes, it is not taking money from the fire department, because I believe there's a special tax also for the fire department. Is this correct?
Well, there's no... Part of what she said is correct and part is not correct. There is no special tax for the fire departments.
Okay.
But she is correct that the projected funding is from land transfer tax, which by statute is restricted to capital-type acquisitions and purchases, so it could not go to fund the fire departments, but it certainly could go to a capital acquisition of the fire department, but it could not go to operational cost of food banks or the other items that have been mentioned.
So my understanding that it is not taking money out of the, away from food for children or people in our county, that is correct, if I understand you, is that right?
That is correct, and that's time.
Thank you. I have, I was a teacher for 30 years, more than 30 years, and I took early retirement because at that time, I loved teaching, always loved it, loved going every day, but I saw such a need for animals. The children had spokespeople, they had parents, they had guardians, they had people who could speak for them. Animals had no one, and I kept looking and seeing the problems and turning aside. I didn't want to get involved in that. And finally, it dawned on me, back in the early 90s, that the animals needed a voice, and I want to thank everyone who's here this evening, whether they support a new animal shelter in the size and cost, or they have other priorities. These are concerned citizens about this county, and I think, I know I respect that, but the most needy, as far as a voice, a spokesperson, and needs that they cannot express their own suffering, is for the animals. I would like to share with you something that was sent to you, I'm not sure you've had a chance to see it, and...
Ms. Sykes?
Yes.
Everyone gets three minutes. Your time has expired, you need to finish up.
Okay, we'll do.
Please, go ahead, but keep it rolling.
Okay, we'll do. This is from Bob Kohler, and I'm just mentioning, because he can't be here tonight, he's doing something in behalf of helping students in the county, how supportive he is for this, and when you are talking about a $2.5 million animal shelter, that is meeting the needs that we have in the county, and hopefully in the near future, and I do hope that with the support, with your support, and the support of many, many citizens in this county, that you will move forward with meeting the adequate needs, since we already have established that we're going to have to move. So, thank you very much for your support and your help with this. This is not an excessive animal shelter. A few things in it, like the training room, help keep animals from being returned to the shelter or turned in. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Gary Spruill? No, Gary Spruill. Okay. Jennifer Simons?
I'll keep this quick. Jennifer Simons, 110 Winnie Hill Court in Idlet. I'm gonna keep this brief, really. I would just like to talk about, you know, the negative press and the polls and the opinion pieces, asking for a magnifying glass examination of expenditures for the shelter, but not the rural center. The rural center's the other capital improvement project this year at a cost of $499,000, just under half a million. So if you have a complaint with the, with the funding for the animal shelter, you should have an equal complaint with the funding for the rural center. It's not that I support or don't support the rural center, I think it's a great thing. Please don't shoot me. So I, but I, what I would do is submit to you that, because it's easier just to kick the can. As far as the park in Moyoc, I've seen that in the newspaper recently. In 2012, January 12th, Cindy Beeman did an article in the Daily Advance, "Currituck Plan Eyes Moyoc Park Markses to Sound and Beaches." And in that article, work on the new park would begin in 2017 with a $1.5 million budget toward its construction, according to the master plan approved by Currituck Commissioners last week. So all the Currituck Commissioners, not, not all of the new ones, but certainly the ones that have been seated, know that the park for Moyoc isn't scheduled for construction until 2017, and there will be a budget. And they've also been notified that that's under the master plan, so no one's clueless about when Moyoc's gonna get their park and that, and so they're not competing with the animal shelter for funding for their park. Work on that $9.2 million, million-dollar Maple Park Recreation Complex on US Highway 158, newly named Currituck Community Park is scheduled to begin soon. About $2 million for the construction has been budgeted already. Work for two of three phases is scheduled to continue over the next five years. And I'll speak to, Mr. Weeks said that the county is moving forward toward building larger community parks rather than smaller neighborhood parks to keep down the cost for upkeep. Smaller parks spread throughout the county are more expensive to maintain than fewer larger parks. We all understand that. So the argument for a park is a little late for this fiscal year. The new budget came into effect July 1st, did it not? Okay, so we're late, and it's a little premature, as Moyoc should be well aware. I simply ask that the shelter be constructed to a sufficient size to accommodate the expected growth in the county over the life cycle of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Marts?
Good evening, I'm Sharon Marts, and I'm from 110 Carrot Oak Drive, Currituck, and I'm here to ask you to support the proposal that Dan has brought to you this evening to move forward with the animal shelter. And by, when I heard your remarks about the five-to-seven-day holding period, I'm really astounded with that, and I hope you'll seriously consider changing that ordinance, because I will give you a personal testimony about how important it is to change it. I had a personal experience with a, with a family pet that was at the shelter, and we had not, no idea that the pet was at the shelter. Come to find out, he'd been there for over a week, and it was a Friday night, and I found out he was there, and I can't tell you how distressed I was to wait until the next day to see if the pet had been euthanized. But because of the wonderful people at the shelter, he was still there, thankfully. And I know there are a lot of people that go out of town on vacations, that leave their pets in the custody of other people, and they may be gone for two weeks, they get back and their family pet's been euthanized. So I hope you'll really seriously consider changing that. I understand that there's not that much space, and sometimes it might be full, and sometimes they do have to put animals down, but if you have the space, I think it's, it's wise to let the animals stay there as long as possible. I'm not saying keep them forever, and I'm not saying to, you know, just, I'm not saying that you should not put them down ever, but please consider changing that ordinance, it's very important. Could be your family pet.
Thank you. Sybil O'Neil?
Good evening, my name is Sybil O'Neil, and I reside in Maple, North Carolina. I received a letter from Ginger Sykes asking for citizens to write our Commissioners and let them know how we feel about supporting the shelter. I understand the need for the shelter, and I also know that we have humans in this county that often wonder where the next meal will come from, but I know of no shelter for them. I'm sure that everyone will remember when the contract was originally up for bid, the AL-AL and the Humane Society bid was a few thousand dollars apart, and the contract was awarded to the AL-AL. Before a year was up, the contract was increased over $20,000, this meaning that AL-AL's bid was bogus. The county awarded the bid to the contractor that is now dictating not only policy, but what the animal shelter should consist of, such as the size, and the things like having a conference room that I don't think that we need, and how does this benefit the animals if they're so concerned about the animals? To spend $2.5 million on an animal shelter, whether it is occupancy tax money or not, who is paying the VEPCO bill, or power bill, the water bill, the phone bill, the insurance and those things? We need to take those into consideration, and if it is our tax dollars, I'm not real big on having a big shelter to have to heat or cool. The Dog of the Month in July of this year has been in that shelter since August of 2011, that's two years. Of those two years, tell me, who paid for that animal to reside there? It might have been volunteers, but I'm sure I didn't interrupt you when you talked, so please let me finish.
She's, she's got the microphone, please.
The county will only pay for an animal to reside in the shelter for 15 days, and I read this in the ordinance, so I think y'all were having a discussion on the five-to-seven days, but it is 15 days. And if that animal has not been adopted, it is, it is to be put down, because the county is only to pay for that animal for 15 days. So I would like to also know who's paying for the animal after the two years is up. Would it not be more feasible for maybe the county animal control, the Sheriff's Department to take control of the shelter? Would that not be more cost-efficient? Would that not be more cost-efficient? Would this save taxpayers money? Something to think about. I think that it's something to think about, and I think that there's a lot of emotions going on in this room tonight. I think that we need to think with our brains, not our hearts and our emotions, but what's best for the people in this county. And $2.5 million is an astrical amount of money to be spending on a building for animals when there are, I don't know, Ms. Polly, but I thought, I echo what you said, but I think that we need to start thinking about the people a little bit more also, instead of putting the animals here and the people here. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce?
My name is Joyce Wollby. I live right down here in Bradview. Animals don't have many voices. Humans have multitude of voices, and yet we're all aware of that. And the one thing about it is animals can't vote, and I know most of y'all wouldn't be up there if they could. And I'm asking you to grow a heart for these animals, please. And I'm asking you, please, it would behoove you all to please spend one week, independent of each other, by yourselves, down at the current animal shelter, to see how you'd like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hall?
My name is Mike Hall, 174 Old Jury Road, Moyoc. I came here to hear what was being said, to listen to the county manager, to the people out here behind me. And not to take up any more of your time, I believe I've heard a lot of information, and I, your proposal is saying, let's move forward, at least in, continue on this process, nobody's spent any money. I agree with it. Let's move forward, and we'll wait and see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Tab?
Hi. I'm Tony Tab. I live at 328 Mason Lane, and I'm here this evening, I feel like I live in the Twilight Zone, because I, I watch the news, I read the Drudge Report, I, I'm watching my country melt down, and, and I'm listening to job reports. One just came out in the last day or two, and, and we're, like the lady said, about people here in the county who don't have food to eat. The largest increase in jobs that we have is part-time jobs. The entire increase of jobs since, I don't know, I think it's been at least a year or so, has been, or the decrease in unemployment has been due to people leaving the workforce because they can't find jobs. So the situation, I, to me, I say it's the Twilight Zone because I spent this week, I went to the Aviation Technical Center ribbon-cutting, where the county graciously gave $7.1 million of county taxpayer money to, to pay for this growth in government that does not create jobs. We need to, we're doing things backwards here. We need to create the environment to create jobs by keeping taxes low and fighting some of these things that are a little out of our control in Kurutuk, but we can't add to the problem by spending this kind of money. So I would recommend that we just take a breath, delay doing anything with this. Two and a half million dollars to me seems absurd, and by the way, I did, I left the Aviation Technical Center, and I went to the pet shelter, and I am a supporter of the pet shelter. I have been for the last few years, I've donated. I think what we need to do is, is look at some way of doing this with private money. We need to, we need, we need to not grow government, but let's look out for our fellow men and, and women and animals the best way that we can, because realistically, things are not gonna get better with the economy. They, we are about to go over a cliff, and there's no reason for Kurutuk County to be a bunch of lemmings. So I would appreciate it if you would reconsider moving forward on this at this point in time, and let's look at other alternatives. Have, have we looked at some other location other than putting it in the Maple Park? Is there some other facility? I under, how soon do we have to move because of the airport expansion? Anybody know?
Dan?
Dan, do you know when that is? When, when the airport absolutely has to? Do we have to do this immediately?
There's no absolute.
You're waiting for more grant money from the federal government, and have you applied for those grants?
We have applied for it, and they have verbally committed the funds to us, but if we don't have that project under contract by 2015, the funding formula changes, and we're in jeopardy of not being able to continue to have those funds. But the project itself does, does or does not have to get done.
Okay.
But if we want to continue down the path we're doing right now, we'd have to have something moving by 2015.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Delane Spruill?
My name is Delane Spruill, and I live at 118 J. Court in Moyoc. One of the main things I keep hearing tonight is the money, the money, $2.5 million. I know some of us have looked at the plan, and we know what the, what is there, but you all have said that you haven't really had your hands on it yet, and you don't know what the rooms are and what is justified, and a lot of the people sitting behind me question, why are you spending $2.5 million on an animal shelter? Well, I just want to say, and I hope people under, behind me understand, an animal shelter is a very specialized building. You've got to have certain drainage, you've got to have certain ventilation, and if you don't do this right from the beginning, you're gonna have problems down the road that you're gonna end up having to pay for. One person mentioned, why would the plan even have something like a conference room on it? What do you need a conference room for on an animal shelter? Well, one thing we were doing this summer was having classes for young people, so that they could learn about jobs with animals, things you could do, you know, as careers later on in their life. Well, we had to do it right in the lobby, set up a table, and we could barely move around the lobby of the animal shelter. So as you're moving towards the future, you want to think about, it's not just adopting that animal, you know, what are you doing for the public? What are you doing for the community? And that's a way to serve the community. You're, you're educating young people in the shelter. I am a very compassionate person, I'm very compassionate to people, but animals don't have a voice, and I feel like people do. They can get a job if they have that initiative. Animals can't. So when you say $2.5 million, you're gonna argue over that little bit of money, I think you need to spend it now. You need to spend $2.5, build a decent building, so that when you come five years from now, it doesn't look like it's falling down around your, your ears. I've toured the Chesapeake Shelter, and no comparison, it's gigantic, it's huge, but it's modern, they spent a lot of money. You all could go and tour it, there's certain aspects of a shelter that you've got to have, and you can't cut corners. So, thank you.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Spruill, I believe you, do you wish to speak? You left when I called your name.
I said it all.
Okay. Y'all must be together. Okay. That's all that I had signed up to speak tonight.
Can I say one more point? I had something, Dan?
We're moving on. Everybody's had their time. I will say that this has been an ongoing project for a number of years. This didn't just drop out of the sky as something, we just decided we're gonna replace the animal shelter, and, and decide, well, let's see if we can't spend the most money we can find. The Board of Commissioners have approached this building like we've approached every building that we built in this county. We hire experts that come in and tell us what is needed in a facility, they do a study to find the size, the proper sizing, and then we go out and we do what we're doing tonight. We present it, we talk about it. We haven't committed $2.5 million, no matter what you write on Facebook, we haven't committed to $2.5 million. And no matter what you write on Facebook, we haven't cut the shelter. We don't know what the size of the shelter's gonna be, we don't know what the dollar amount is gonna be. There's been a lot of input from people here tonight that don't think we need an animal shelter at this size. There's been an input from people that think we need to double what we're looking at. But I'm here to tell you tonight, the Board of Commissioners are gonna take a methodical approach, we're gonna look at it, some of you are not gonna be happy on both sides, and we're going to follow the approach that we've done in the past with buildings, and we're gonna build a building that when people access the building, it's not gonna fall on them, and it's, and it's gonna be what is needed for the county. So, I don't know what it's gonna look like, nobody in this audience knows what it's gonna look like. We don't know how big it's gonna be, and we don't know what it's gonna cost yet. And there's a couple things that Mr. Scanlon needs to clarify about the funding, the land transfer tax, I assume is what's gonna build this shelter?
Yes, sir.
That money is, by general statute, can be used for what?
Capital items only.
Buildings. In the past, people are talking about, y'all are spinning us into oblivion. Well, by general statute, you have to spend that money on capital buildings. That is where that money has gone, that's where the boards before us have spent it, it's where the boards after us will spend it. It's required by general statute that it can only be spent on capital outlay, which is buildings. Cannot be spent on any of the other things that we're jockeying for, whatever. This building will be purely out of land transfer tax. So having said all that, probably more than I should, anybody else have any other comments?
Don't have a comment, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, very well said. I was, half the remarks that you made, I was thinking of saying myself, you have said it all, thank you very much. I make a motion that we approve the county manager's request and the recommendation of the board to move this process forward. None of us know what it's gonna look like, none of us know what it's gonna cost, but if we don't move it forward, we won't know. So with that being said, that's my motion.
I will second that motion, and also thank the people in the audience for all your views. We do appreciate it, because we sit here, and we have a mandate to serve you, regardless of our feelings sometime.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? I will say that all the comments tonight, we have heard them, whether you're pro or against, we will be scrutinizing and looking at everything.
Could I say one other thing?
Yes, sir.
And I would, I would also recommend to everyone, the charette that will be coming up, please attend. That's where your input will be really heard. These gentlemen, the architects and stuff, will be there, there is where you can get and get your maximum input to what this thing is gonna look like.
And they heard you tonight.
Yes. So I would, I would ask you all to please attend. There's, that's where the rubber meets the road. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I, I just had a comment prior to the motion or whatever, a couple things. I'm new to this, what, myself and, you cut me off?
No, I said, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said something else. Myself and Commissioner Griggs, we're eight months into this. I've lived in this county for 30 years, right at it, donated my time, donated my money, donated anything. Some of the personal attacks that we've received in emails from people from the AL-AL, so forth and so on, some of them were, and I'm not insulting anybody, some of them were uneducated comments where people didn't know, you know, we didn't know. And I just, like I said, I'm new to this, law enforcement officer for this county, have been for 13 years, and this job brings a lot more drama than that does, and I was kinda surprised when I, when I learned that. But, like I said, I mean, I have three dogs, I love animals, you know, we're for doing, building a good shelter. I think all, all of us here have a pet, you know, we're not the guy that's kicking a dog outside or something like that. But I just, the personal attacks, the misinformation, and I think some of it derived from AL-AL, and I, I just, like I said, I was offended. I've donated probably six, maybe five or six events, I've personally taken one of my golf carts, dropped it off, my fuel, my trailer, my time, which, I don't have a lot of free time, you can ask my wife. And, you know, donated my time, and then I received just, you know, some just ludicrous comments of, I'm heartless, tiny-minded, you know, I just, like I said, I, I was offended. I've donated, I've coached 50-plus sports in this county, I've taken kids home, people in the audience, I've dropped their kids off, I've changed somebody's tire here in the audience, you know, possibly maybe arrested somebody here in the audience, but that comes with the, comes with the program, it's nothing personal. But like I said, I know we've spoke about this, there's seven of us, all of us have animals, you know, we know it's a need, the current shelter, I've been in it, it's, it's horrendous, you know, and, and no offense to, you know, it's just, it's, it's done its time, but, you know, before you attack us, hate on us, Facebook, 'cause I had somebody at my house the other day using my tanned bed, my electricity, and she was hating on me on Facebook, but, you know, so, regardless, but, you know, like I said, we're for, you know, for what's right, and, you know, like I said, I mean, you just gotta give us a chance before you, before you pound us in the ground, but.
That's Mr. Griggs.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I think I'll add a little footnote to this, I have it on the most strict of confidence that my dog would vote for me. So, opinions may vary.
Two, two out of three of mine would vote for me, I think one of them would like me a lot, so, I'll be honest.
Well, mine did vote for me.
Mine voted, and then I had two or three more out in the neighborhood, did you say?
Yeah. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda.
To move.
Motion for approval. All, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Commissioner's report. Mr. McCord, do you have anything to report?
Not at this time, everything has been animal shelter-driven, I think I've, I've-
Mr. Griggs? Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Idlet?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Well, I got to ruin it for you. Mr. Scanlon, I would like for you to get with the Department of Transportation and schedule a meeting in Corrala to discuss the public safety that Mr. Idlet and I have been discussing, and you've discussed, and what DOT can do to help alleviate some of the public safety issues in, in the Corrala Outer Banks. So I'd like for them to go to Corrala.
To, to a CCA meeting?
Yes. Jerry Jennings and whomever. Also, we need an update on what's going on with the OLF, there's some funny stuff going on, they're looking at the sphere of-
Yeah, yeah. Over-horizon.
Yeah. And there's some new stuff going on that you need to get caught up on. And then, as a side note, I think it's quite the height of hypocrisy that when the new health care law goes into effect January 1, that business has been excluded, individuals will pay the mandate, and it's just been announced that congressional staffers will be getting a special subsidy per DHS to pay for the cost of their health care. It shows you the ruling class is really getting out of line in Washington, DC. Do you have anything to report?
No, sir.
We have, next item is closed session. Closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industry or businesses within the county.
To move.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We shall move to closed session.